President. This meeting is recorded.
Perfect, those that are able, please stand for the time of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Board of Education Guidelines, with an open mind, we will establish an atmosphere that allows expression of all views, even when views are not in line with all members being respectful of time. We work collaboratively with the district administrator by having open and honest conversations around district priorities. We work collaboratively with all stakeholders to monitor key indicators so that equitable teaching and learning results and high achievement. We're working towards building a trust environment where both students and staff can reach their full potential and serve success in academics, the arts, and athletics. Public comments tonight? I don't see any, I'm gonna skip that portion of reading, there's, there's no anybody doing it online, right? So I have to remember.
I don't.
That is correct.
Perfect. Well, jump right into showcasing schools and student learning with the CWSA update. And Anita is probably still enjoying her summer vacation, actually, we have a new.
We have a new, right, Jimmy is.
Jimmy is the. What is Jimmy's last name?
I knew you were gonna ask that. And I'm gonna have to get back to it.
Okay, no worries.
Sorry about if you're looking at this online, Jimmy, sorry, I got.
Well, look forward to hearing from Jimmy in the future with the school board meetings. Next would be a Wise Academy updates.
And just as note on this one, Wise Academy, it has been, you know, about three weeks ago, they held their advance as opposed to retreat, advanced and sort of coming together to identify what are the major priorities and pretty much working as far as identifying what are additional resources, what are good staffing, what are good? A lot of those issues were consuming a lot of things they're talking about, so they're very excited to support right now. We have two hundred and twenty students in Wise this year. And that, and they're looking for ways to responsibly map to be able to grow that number, so a lot of those type of areas that are going, I can't give you much more beyond that, but I know it's very active as I'm talking back and forth, and it's some exciting work.
Thank you very much. And then overarching results, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Or twenty-three, twenty-four.
Okay, got those updated. Anything with overarching results?
So on the overarching results, a note just on the calendar is that today's meeting is going to be a little bit on the thin side because one of the parts that would come in at this point was just getting the, we don't, we didn't do any staff presentation because we don't have any staff at this particular point as they're coming in, and so we'll be looking to get that on a calendar as that's coming up more. One particular note, and this is also on the overarching results, it gives us the calendar of what are the major things we're going to be looking at? And just as a note for the board as well as people viewing is that today we is going to be a little bit on the thin side because we were scheduled to be talking about treatment of stakeholders, however, and you know simply how they're working at each building and having principals report. That said, we have two, three new principals who have not even met their full staffs at this point, which really wouldn't make a lot of sense to get much reported at this point, so we're pushing that off to a future board meeting, which leaves today a little bit on the shorter side, so if you can endure a short board meeting, that's, that's why.
Certainly understandable, so. All right, communicating with the board, our business manager Lynn Knights.
Our audit has been completed, they were here a record two days, which is phenomenal, again, no findings. We ended up the year in a pretty good financial position. Right now, they're unaudited figures, we had the opportunity to transfer, transfer some funds into Fund Forty-Six again. So we are financially healthy at the moment, which means our SRS funds will be running out in December, June of two thousand twenty-four. And our referendum will be coming up in a couple of years, so right now, we're good, but if we don't pass a referendum, we're gonna be right back where we started. But things are looking good now, so let's enjoy that.
Good, thank you, Lynn. Any questions for her?
All right, Director of Student Services, Brian Grill. All right, I'm gonna move a few big things forward. I have two quick presentations for you tonight that I just wanted you to see the work that we're doing, and Bailey's gonna present one of them. But I'm gonna start with our special education reflection. This one here, yeah, thank you. So if you go next. So we're out, so you say hey my own button.
Valet service for your brother.
Exactly, this is. So why I come to the board every year and share this with you, I like to look at our special education evaluations for the year to look at both our initial evaluations and our reevaluations. And why we look at these two things, initials, we want to make sure that when we're going through the evaluation process, we are making good referrals, so I want to ensure that our MT multi-tiered systems of support are working, that we're catching kids and making solid referrals, because if they're working through the process, we should have a decent qualification rate, you know, because we're taking, having kids walk through, we know, yep, when we go to referral, this is a kid that should be evaluated. So we like to look at the initials and the reevaluations, I like to look at those because we're looking at the progress our students with disabilities are making and our supports and programs working for our students, so we want to look at how many students are receiving services, making growth, and then potentially exiting special education. Because we don't want students, we don't want that to be a life sentence for students to always require special education, we want them to get the services that they need and either move on, and if you still need it, that's okay. Some kids will need it their entire educational career, but we want to monitor and see what progress are we seeing. Go ahead, thank you. All right. Nope, that's okay, so I, this is just previous years, I like to always look at the last three years. In two thousand twenty-one, you can see during the pandemic, we had a really high evaluation number, we had a hundred and fifteen evaluations. Our typical is between seventy and eighty evaluations a year. So this was really high, and this was part of the reason last year I came to you and said I needed to contract another day with CISA a year on top of our full-time school psychologist, because for a school psychologist to do a hundred and fifteen evaluations a year was really high. So fast forward to last year, our number. Go ahead and, oh, sorry. We were down to a hundred and three, still high. But now this year, our numbers look like they are coming down. We're down to eighty-four, so we're in, everything is coming down, we're still having conversations, we're still seeing effects of the pandemic, but slowly we're getting back to our normal number of evaluations. As you look initially evaluations, we did thirty initials this year. The one thing looking at that, you had eighteen that qualified, nine that did not, and three that the family decided to discontinue the evaluation. But right now, our qualification rate is around sixty percent. That's something I'm watching, it's going up from during the pandemic years, but I'm watching that because really you want to be somewhere around eighty, eighty-five percent qualification rate saying you're making good referrals, solid referrals. But right now, some of that, which I look at later, what is the source of some of these referrals? We are getting a lot of referrals that have come from doctors telling parents you need to make a referral, things like that. And that's where I've been doing work with the medical field as well to help them understand that their qualification rates for a medical disability is different than what our qualifying qualifying criteria are educationally. So that's where some of our numbers are still there, because we still have a higher-than-usual parent request request rate for a disability, so that's why you're seeing that that isn't as high as what I would like to see it at, so. Reevaluations, you can see we're at forty and fourteen, that fourteen percent of disabilities, were they no longer qualified, a lot of that I will say comes from speech. And these are where we graduate a lot of students because they come to us as three- and four-year-olds with some articulation concerns where you can't understand necessarily what they're saying. And then once they get to first, second, third grade, a lot of them have hit those articulation goals, and that's where we're seeing a lot of our exits, so it's good to see that where you have a twenty-five percent exit rate because our speech services are working. But also too, at the high school sometimes, that's where we see students with other health impairments with ADHD, things like that, they've gathered strategies on how to focus on work, so you may see some of those high school students exiting special education as well. So here are where our disability categories, where we receive the majority of our evaluations. So you can see all the different disability areas, the one I just want to point out that I know is significant developmental delay, we have a qualification rate of fifty percent. That's because many of those are coming from birth to three. We have a partnership with Wood, Juneau, and Adams County, and it's also part of our federal law that, hey, if they're in birth to three, at two years, nine months, birth to three has to ask parents, would you like to us to submit a referral to the school district? If they say yes, we do a referral. But part of that is, they will say, if they've been with birth to three and birth to three seen a parent, a child grow, they may say, hey, they've made a lot of growth, they tell them, they don't know our rules as well as what our qualification requirements are, but they say they've made growth, we don't know if they're gonna qualify, do you want us to still refer? And ninety-nine percent parents want to just double-check, especially with a young child, and that's fine. But that's just why our qualification rate is fifty-fifty, because birth to three has different rules than what we have. Thank you. All right, and here's reevaluations, this fluctuates every single year because it's depending on the year a student first qualified. So fifty-four, like last year, we had sixty-six. So it's just depending on the year students qualify, how many reevaluations that we have. But you see many of ours, again, speech is the one where we did a lot of dismissals, we dismissed eight students, so. All right, and then here's the breakdown of where we received our thirty initials, like I said, fourteen are through our own system, where we worked through the multi-tiered system of support, and I can tell all students that went through our MTSS process, where we followed that procedure, they did qualify. So at least in that area, the family inherent ones, that's one where we had one or two qualify. Because they received advice from their medical professionals, and I respect medical professionals so much. But one of the things that we're working to help them understand, they just have different rules than us. And I'm not saying it's wrong that they want us to seek out, but that's where I want to, you'll see later in reflection, I want to have more parent learning to help understand the resources we have as a school where we can support before going to a referral. So we can try things to say, is a referral the right thing? Because special education's not the first step, it's the last step after we try things first, so. And this just looks at the trend to see what disability areas we receive referrals for. I would say speech and language continues to be one of the highest and always will be. But then the other one, the other health impairment, that's often where like those medical diagnoses come in, and they're coming because the student may have ADHD, may have autism and other areas. So these are the areas where we're receiving the majority of our referrals. So my takeaways, like I said, continued at parent education and really helping them understand the resources that we have that can help students. And then also working with our medical professionals. The last two years, I have presented at Spireus Clinic in front of pediatricians, family medicine doctors, some of their counselors, and explain the difference and how we support students and ask them, how can we work together? And so we're building traction, it's not fully there yet, but I look to hopefully expand this to the Marshfield Clinic as well and talk with them next year, so that way they just know who I am, I know who they are, and we're starting to build that relationship, so they have the information to explain it to parents as well, and they're like, I'm not sure, I don't want to say the wrong thing. I always leave them a stack of my business cards that they can hand out to parents and say, hey, call this guy, he can explain what resources the school has. But other than that, you can see our number has dropped eighty-four, from a hundred and fifteen in two thousand twenty, we're starting to get to those pre-pandemic numbers. And then five oh fours is another area where we are receiving quite a few questions, because sometimes it's not special education services a student needs, it's accommodations. So five oh fours are becoming a little more regular, we're up to fifteen within the district. So that's something we watch, and right now our counselors are the managers of our five oh four programs, and I work with them closely on that. But lastly, I just wanted you to see there just how many meetings. I know you guys are a very active board and want to know, but just so you know, we have quite a few meetings within special ed, so if you ever hear, we have a lot of meetings, we do. We had two hundred and thirty-seven IEP meetings last year with eighty-four evaluation meetings. So you think about with how many school days there are, that's at least on average of one and a half a day. So we have quite a few meetings, and it is hard work, but we have an amazing special education staff, school site counselors, principals sit in as liaise for those meetings, so it takes a whole community to make this happen, so. But this is a way I monitor our program to say, how effective are we as a department?
Now, the two hundred and thirty-seven, that might, that's not individual student, that might be multiple meetings with the same student.
It could be, yes.
Family, so that's not two hundred and thirty-seven students necessarily.
Yep, so we have about a hundred and sixty-five students with disabilities, some have two meetings a year, dependent to different situations. So you're absolutely right, that's not one for each student.
Plus, Brian, you also have students that are transient, they come, they go, they come in again, they go.
And we have to have a meeting every single night, you know? So those are all things that we do, and like I said, I could not thank the teaching staff, the principals, everyone for all their hard work, because it really does take a village.
So one question to you, are you seeing more behavioral-type things referral-wise, like at the younger years, because of like the pandemic and all that happened, I mean, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
You know?
EB, emotional behavioral disability and other health impairment, we are seeing an uptick, it's not drastic as of yet. Some of that is coming from, I don't think it's as drastic because the criteria for emotional behavioral disability has changed. So one of the things now, like with a learning disability, you have to have two interventions around reading, say, before we can look at reading disability. Now, EBD is the same way, you have to have a behavior intervention before we can go to referral. So some of the work that Rod is doing, that's really good work around small groups, meeting with small groups counts for intervention, and it is meeting the need for quite a few. So that way, we're not seeing the uptick in referrals as we might have predicted coming out of the pandemic, because we were starting that work before the pandemic even hit. So we were kind of prepared, and we are working on strategies even before that. Other questions about special education evaluations? So thank you. All right, and now I'm gonna do my second one quick, and that's where I'll bring Bailey up. So Bailey has been with us, this is year three, or four. Why I like to have Bailey come every year is to help you guys understand, because as part of the referendum, you, the community said, yes, we agree to have a district social worker. And she comes every year, and our numbers have increased, and I want you to see the amazing work she's doing to help service our families and how our numbers have grown, and our community needs have grown. So you see that we are getting a lot of support and great work done from Bailey, so.
Okay, so again, just kind of a quick, brief, Brian already kind of talked about whether reflecting on some of this data, but just gives us a picture of kind of what the needs are, community tells us kind of where we're spending a lot of time, what kind of demographics we're having to work with in the district. Also gives insight to where we might need to spend some more time or create more programs. And then just kind of shows us the needs of our community. So I just kind of lay out, these aren't, this isn't all-encompassing of every single little bitty minute interaction that I have with students. But this is just some of the documented interactions that we have with students throughout the school year, so we have our homeless number, that is the McKinney-Bento definition, so any families that qualify under the McKinney-Bento Act. This year, we had twenty-four, that's twenty-four percent of the interactions, I use the word interactions just because it's not a specific student, some of these students fall under multiple of these categories. Some of the interactions that I have with families, so when I work with a homeless student, sometimes it's multiple students in one family. So I just put interactions as, you know, that's, they may be documented under homeless and handle with care and working with Empowerment to Health Clinic. So we had twenty-four students identified as homeless this school year, that includes doubled up, living in a hotel motel, staying in a camper, couch surfing, we had an unprecedented amount of unaccompanied youth this year. That's a student who either living with a friend or living with a non-guardian family member. There were many of those students and many that were transient and just kind of coming in and going out. Spent a lot of time at the high school this year with those students, it was, it was kind of shocking, this year was got to become a well-rounded in that, the law around that. We had eight students identified as foster care. Twenty-six identified as working with a county social worker, that's also that number doesn't represent all of them, because we don't always get notified when families are working with CPS or some of the counties that we're not currently working with, so I'm working on developing relationships with Juneau County right now, but right now we don't have a ton of communication with them. Adams County and Wood County, I have some pretty well-established relationships with. So I meet with them monthly or bi-weekly with the Youth Justice Department and the CCS Department, and then a Community Outreach Department in Adams County. ADP is our adolescent diversion program that we have in Wood County here through CW Solutions and the Wood County Human Services Department, so that works with students ages ten to eighteen now, working to try to divert students from entering the juvenile justice system. So we send many referrals that way, and students complete an eighteen-week program through that. We had quite a few ten-and-eleven-year-olds completed this year, which was really exciting because they're trying to lessen that age to try to, you know, reach them even sooner, and they're a lot more willing to work the program at that age as well. Day treatment, we had three students identified as attending day treatment, we did have a few that looked into that, and for either insurance purposes or scheduling or hand-recentstand, we're not able to enter day treatment. But we also had some students, that's not including some students that worked with Northwest during the summer. We had some district families who worked with them this summer as well. So that's not included in that three. We had several students who were hospitalized with mental health concerns, that's also not all-encompassing, because they, families don't have to tell us when that happens. It's just nice for us to know, so we can offer them support when they return. Empowerment to Health Clinic is our school-based mental health counseling agency, they come into the buildings per building once a week and work with students here in a licensed separate room where they can receive their counseling sessions, and the family doesn't have to worry about transportation. It is a, it's separate from the school in that the families are still billed and they work with the families to set that up through the clinic. An exciting thing we have coming this year is ODC is going to be coming into our buildings as well, offering another mental health counselor, so that is phenomenal, we've been working with them since the fall of last year. Working with the state, trying to get licensing and everything done, so that was a process, but we will finally be able to start students this fall with that, so that's really exciting. And then him.
Bailey, can I, can I just develop that thought just a little bit, what is the value of having counselors being able to be in the school? As a specific service?
So one of the main things I think is we see that a lot of the families in our community have a lot of barriers. I was just at a homeless coalition meeting this morning where we talked about transportation being an issue. Our one cab company that came to Nacusa from Wisconsin Rapids now no longer goes outside the Wisconsin Rapids city limits. So there is absolutely no public transportation available to anyone in our community right now. So any families that don't have a vehicle, don't have a license, they are scrambling to find rides to any appointments, medical, mental health, whatever it may be. So it's a big barrier for a lot of our families, so this way the student's able to attend while at school. It also helps families who work a lot, you know, we have a lot of families who do shift work around here, so they aren't able to get kids to appointments maybe after school. And then the other great benefit is we have a really great relationship with our council, you know, mental health agencies that come into the school. So I meet with them regularly, we get releases of information from the families and are able to kind of share and and help really wrap around that kiddo, so that, you know, if they share something in their counseling session, that's going to be helpful for their teacher to know or for me to know to help support them while they're going back into the classroom, then we're able to have that communication. We are able to have that communication with releases of information with other council agencies, but having them here on site just helps that communication piece move faster. And then Handle With Care being our last kind of program that I document here. Paul Lee Pair kind of heads up Handle With Care for all Wood County, and he is the contact person for local the police departments and sheriff's department, so law enforcement agencies work with Handle With Care Wood County, they, when a law enforcement officer has an interaction with a family, and that family has a school-aged child, they will submit a Handle With Care to Paul. Paul will then forward that to me if the student is from Nacusa or to designated individuals in other Wood County districts. All that notification is, is just, please handle a student with care, they have law enforcement interaction on this date. There aren't details, it's not saying, laying out exactly what happened, it's just they, hey, just so you know, this kid might have, be having a tough time, so please, like, check in with them, make sure they're okay. We don't ever bring up the incident to the student themselves, because the student may not be aware of it, maybe they were there, but you know, didn't witness anything happen, so we just want to make sure that we give the teachers a head-up, heads-up of, hey, just make sure the students have a rough day, you just support them. So that was documented for fifteen kiddos. Again, that doesn't encompass all of our students who have law enforcement interactions, because that is just the Wood County program, so it doesn't include Juneau County, Adams County, anything like that, and again, we are, we are all professionals dealing with people in crisis, so law enforcement officers don't always get the forms submitted, and that's okay too. But we do get quite a few, and those are helpful for us to be able to support the kiddos while they're here.
So Bailey, I have a question for you, is this information then shared also with all the staff? Like in each one of the schools, because I think this is great information. I think, you know, they'd have a better understanding, you know, of where these kids, the dynamics, where these kids are coming from, if they saw this, you know what I mean? Especially with all the mental health that's going on nowadays, and you know, let's just say economically, we're just gonna see more and more of this, just because of hard times.
Yeah.
I believe. So, you know, I think that'd be great information for staff to say.
No, great. Thank you for that feedback, yeah. I think it goes hand-in-hand with the trauma-informed care.
Yeah, right, right.
And that'll be coming up.
You bet, in a second.
Sorry, I mean.
Really great foreshadowing here.
Got you.
So this just kind of lays out between elementary, middle, high school, kind of where those numbers fall, which students were in which buildings. You will notice that some of them, certain buildings aren't on there. ADP is only offered to middle-high school-age students and not even all of the middle-school students at this point. Foster care numbers, those can be kind of sporadic, they don't, you know, those types of systems don't go by age here. And then day treatment, a lot of times that is with the older students. Same with our Handle With Care, we only get district data for that, Paul doesn't delineate it between buildings, so we don't have a wide number there. One thing I did want to point out to our county contact, we don't, again, always get CPS notification when students are working with county social workers. But I do work very closely with our youth justice workers, which is why you see higher numbers for high school, middle school, because often as students are working with youth justice, if they're in that kind of thirteen to eighteen age range. And then this is just the early data. So a few things. And then this is just the early data, um so a few things to note here. Our homeless numbers again went way up this year, a lot of that is due to unaccompanied homeless youth. I think we had maybe one last year and this year, I mean, we had about five, I think at one point, um. Working with county social workers, that number did rise up a little bit, I will say some of that was attributed to some of our truancy. Um, our social workers working with truancy, the county was really great about kind of gathering some of those students in this year. Um, some of their restrictions for referrals for truancy are changing for next year, so we might see a difference in that number next year as well. Um. Our Handle With Care number, last year that number was very, very high, um. Paul had kind of, that was kind of the first push-up Handle With Care, um so we had it in twenty twenty. And twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, um last year he had reached out to a lot of new departments, so we saw a really big rise in it. And then I think this year it just kind of tapered off a little bit, I know Paul's working with, always communicating with local law enforcement agencies, so. Um, I think that accounts for us right there. And then just future action steps, we do have this school-based mental health grant, which. I don't speak grant terms greatly, but I know that's kind of, things are making some adjustments with that in the world of budgets.
Correct.
That's Brian's lane. Um.
When you and I are on it.
Um, but part of that is we are doing the trauma-based relational intervention with um Tonya Ningas through Marshfield Clinic. And that is the trauma-informed care that will be doing that Jason may kind of refer to, so. This data would be great to bring into that when he comes speak with our staff. Uh, we are piloting our social emotional learning curriculum this year, uh we've got some new programs we're going to be doing with that. Um, I am hoping to really update and connect with Juneau County this um school year, that's kind of one of my big goals. Uh, last year really kind of brought Adams County in a little more, so this year we're gonna try to bring Juneau County in, they do have. Much fewer resources than the other two counties, so what that communication could bring, I'm not sure, but we're gonna explore it and see what's there. Um, and then just enhancing staff net knowledge on the McKinney Bento Act, um and district policies and procedures. We just have a, a change in mandatory reporting um requirements, so that'll be a, a step this year. And then just continuing to develop community education programs through that engagement that Brian was talking about earlier. You know, that was a lot in a short amount of time.
Yeah, I think that was great.
I think so, I think it's really good progress and it's a good information from, you know, coming as well to kind of combine all three, but. Any other, any other questions for?
Excellent work.
Jennifer, do you have any questions?
You're, you're on mute, Jennifer.
There we go, um Brandon, if it's possible, if you could send presentations, I was unable to see them on screen.
Oh yeah, I can send them to you, no problem.
Okay, perfect.
I can just make a comment as reflection, is when Bailey mentioned that she's starting year four here, um you know. Bailey came on as part of the foresight, the last referendum to be able to say, we need a, a district social worker. Basically plays the role to connecting outside resources in the community and making a seamless transition so people don't get lost in the cracks. And we knew the need then, but we had no idea how much that need would be through the pandemic and the things afterwards. I would just sit in here thinking, where in the world would we be if we didn't have Bailey? She was going with those, and I appreciate the continuity of care to services we can really provide for us. And I'm just having worked with many of those students one-on-one, just like, and worked alongside Bailey, I so appreciate the work she does.
Bailey and, and Brian, the other thing, um, cause you know my class was the academy, yeah, sorry. But with those students, you know, I think having those two working together this year. If something could be done where they could see. How they can make the best for those kids, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Cause sometimes I think, you know. I don't know how much they know and what they don't know, like with trauma and all that stuff, so.
And they're included in all of those.
Easier for him.
We did work very, very closely this year, it worked, I mean, there were quite a few students that we were.
Good, 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 well, thank you.
Um, all right, up next is Alexa Barbour, our student representative, who's probably enjoying her summer vacation.
But if I could take your time quickly, because I want to kind of give you a quick update on homecoming.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, a few different things, because we have a very early homecoming this year, the September twenty-second will actually be the game. Uh, there is a community group that is working on trying to bring more community activity around um homecoming as well. And then interacting with student council, who is the main driver for uh for homecoming for us. Um, the parade will be on Wednesday this year, because Paul Han was able to get various athletic events. Home events throughout homecoming week, so soccer, volleyball, um and then of course football. Now, the, the downside to it is, is the Wisconsin DOT and the powers that be. Are going to be taking the railroad tracks by the mill down September fifth. So, we are going to be using the same less than desirable parade route that we had last year for our parade. On Wednesday, so. Just to be aware of that, you're, you're going to hear from some people, I'm sure, um but we are trying to build in then on that Wednesday. A pep rally and then a bonfire, you know, and so there's still some work to do around the bonfire, but um, so those are just a couple of quick things. And then, uh, yeah, we have the football game on Friday night, we have the homecoming dance on Saturday night, and.
Nice.
Or you know what, it'll be there, or you know, but I just wanted to give you a quick update. And different date, so.
And I think the first home football game is next.
Well, the scrimmage is.
But that's at three thirty in the afternoon.
Yeah.
And then the first home game is. And then I'm sure volleyball has a game around that time too.
So with the bonfire, I mean, there's a list of requirements that need to be.
Yeah, and I'm working with Mark and then Jeff Faber from the fire department, Gretchen from the city, and then Steve.
I just want my insurance company.
Mostly are all things that we've already had addressed in the past, or just a matter of.
Yeah, well, especially in light of the blast. Um, yeah. Incident, so we have to be very careful.
Yeah.
Yeah, perfect, all right, well, thanks for that update, we'll move um into policy governance here tonight. Uh, VSR three staff accountability. Um, policy statement as a board, sole link to district operations, the district administrator has exclusive authority. Over staff and has exclusive right to delegate that authority. Staff are accountable only to the district administrator and their prospective supervisors as determined by the district administrator. Um, anything more to discuss with this from the board workshop? Uh, conversations, anything to know? Uh, I'll solve for your motion right now to approve VSR three.
My second.
Uh, first by Dave, second by Ann, those all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, motion carried. Thank you, uh, last one here, GP three. Uh, policy statement, the board's governing style emphasizes a district vision. Encourage diverse viewpoints, focus on strategic leadership, observe the clear distinction between board and discrimination roles. Make collective decisions, exhibit a future orientation and avoid reactive problems. Um, so this is the sole role as being a school board member, any, any more thoughts, conversations, feedback for that? Um, I'll sound, sound there then, I'll look for motion for GP three.
Then we approve GP three.
Uh, first by Mark.
Second.
Second by Ann, those all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried. Hey, thank you guys. Um, so up next is employee handbook approval. No, I know Diana sent a bunch of the links for us to review in the meantime, um, did you guys have any questions? With the links that you explored with the time that you had, or any feedback, there's also, um. I think there's about five or six links that were in there, so um took a little bit of time, but any questions or feedback on those? I will look for a motion then to approve the employee handbook, so first by Dave. Second, second by Mark, those all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried. Um, all right, and then information only, so we have. We're trying to figure out the agenda, so is, is it gonna be information on the handbook or information on accountability, the special needs scholarship?
It's just information on the handbooks that were in there.
Okay, perfect. Um, and then I know Brian Grill stepped out, so anything more on his end with the special needs scholarship? All right. Moving to the consent agenda for tonight's employment. Uh, Kimberly Batesburg, the Humky Elementary School principal. Uh, Catherine uh Bubla, fourth grade teacher, AMS. Elizabeth Bujero, AMS NHS Educational Assistant. Uh, Terry Whitmore, Wise Academy interim principal, John Thomas, AMS Athletic Director supports. Um, and then coaching, Julian Hewer, head varsity girls basketball coach.
But John Thomas, wasn't he already?
Right, if I can speak. Let me speak to that one, so one of the, the AMS, one of the areas of John Thomas's role is that. Many of, as athletic director, he's been dual, hi- his primary job is as assistant principal of, of AMS. And he does, however, many of the, as we have been tracking his hours and working those type of things, many of the hours takes him beyond. Um, as he is like traveling, he's actually a bus driver for many of our groups, much of his athletic director. Hours takes him throughout the year to like nine PM meetings, well beyond his, uh, his areas he's going, so. What we're doing is, this is a piece on the, on the co-curricular salary scale, this is where we, um, this is a stipend that are for coaches. For various other positions that are paid outside of that, in, and, and as we were structuring a way to say, okay, have one balanced athletic director duties. Fairly, um, those are, because the, really truly, it's the bulk of his duties are his athlete. Um, basically to say, okay, you can't work twenty, sorry, it'd be saying, hey Jason, I'm sorry, you can't have a assistant principal for uh ten hours a week. Good luck with that, um, as far as those needs of it, a lot of, this is a stipend that is then put in. That is commensurate with other um athletic positions on the co-curricular salary schedule, so. Just to have fairness of contracts and, and also um transparency about the hours that he's doing, that. So people can see what that is, we put it in the co-curricular schedule.
Okay.
And, oh please.
I can speak to Kim Baker, uh, as principal, cause I was on the committee to, well, uh, interview her. Um, we had four very qualified candidates and Kim came out the strongest of the four. Uh, I think she'll bring a, a unit of cheerful light to our schools, and especially our elementary school. She's a very bubbly and she'll do well for us.
And a note for the audience who hasn't heard at this point, uh, Ms. Baker has been um a principal for the last three years at Clintonville Elementary. Um, element, if that's not the name of it, the elementary school in the Clintonville system and has been working very successfully, that was a K-five school. In supporting them and we were very excited for her, and she is from the Wisconsin, she grew up in Wisconsin Rapids and is returning to the area with her family. And we're very excited to have, be part of her story. If I can have a quick note, if I can, there's also the name in here, Terry Whitmore, that people might have a question that raises up and here that. One of the note is that we have, um, want to speak, he's, the position here is Wise Academy interim principal. I want to note that there is, just speak, we spoke a little bit about Wise Academy earlier, Wise Academy has two hundred and twenty students with three teachers. Student teacher ratio is pretty high on that particular one, it's working, the model that they have is very successful and is supporting parents and it's working on those areas. Our goal, however, is not to keep it at two, that's pretty much the limit of how they can successfully do for the current structure. Our goal is to be able to move that upwards to three hundred. Now, a note is that the Wise Academy students, about ninety-five percent are open enrollment, and so many times that that is a very. Uh, the stu- the money that is coming in through there is offset, or is. It pretty much, we have enough students in there that would offset the salary um of some of the, the additional things we would be adding for. In this short-term um position of interim principal, that we're, but, and that would be going towards the students who are generating. That additional salary, those additional funds for the district, and so a couple of notes is that. He is there in a short term, it's, this is a one-year contract and we will renew and we will consider a second contract, a second year at maximum. This intern has a transition to be able to help um build up the systems and the teachers and the training and the models, so that we can. Responsibly grow to three hundred, as opposed to just trying to see how much we can go, we want to have the quality, we want to over. Under, under promise and over deliver, but you have to go ahead and invest at this point to be able to help it grow. And so he will be in that position to help organize for a short-term basis, he's not working full hours and being able to finding that balance. But that as part, we did want to make sure that we have transparency for our community to know where that is being done. Um, and the purpose of that is that to be able to help grow a good thing that's going and then be able to set up for success and then step back and keep watching and going.
No, I think that's great transparency and communication, so. Um, any other questions or feedback on that, otherwise, um, we have a designation with Jonathan Panis from the NHS.
Yeah, Mr. Panis came to us uh four, four years ago, um, and it was just simply a, another district came. Offering more money, yes, to be completely honest, that's where we landed, and so he accepted that position and. And wishing well, he did a nice job uh here in the district, you know, and he was a, always, he's an always optimistic, always cheery individual, so.
So are we looking for another round future now or?
Like crazy.
Um, well, congratulations to the new hires and um thank you for your dedication and uh time to our district, Jonathan. Uh, and would you like to read the donations for tonight?
Sure, donations for Backpack for Kids, forty dollars and eighty-eight cents from Roommate Group HCE. And twenty-five dollars from Secret Heart Collections, so those are the, the new principals that may not know about Backpack for Kids. Um, it was started, oh boy. How many? Fifteen years ago, and it started out.
Was my teens, this is my sixteenth year and it was started my first year.
And it started out real simple, um, and it's run by Nacusa Academy, the staff and students. Uh, and what happens is, there's other players in this such as Diana and. Paul Lee Pear and, you know, still there's other people involved, just not the Nacusa Academy, but um, they. Go backpacks for every weekend for families and uh that need food, and uh, yeah. That's how that works, one year we had thirty-six backpacks going out, and that was, yeah.
That's awesome.
Quite a trip, but it's great, I mean, and most of the families, as I said, are very appreciative and, you know. Keep bringing in the donations, we'll take them.
Good opportunity for kids to share their.
And they love it, you know, the more, and, and what I'd like to see, you know, if ever possible, is to get the regular high school kids. And the academy kids working together, they could switch off, when we, they do it the next week, maybe high school kids that. You know, want to do some volunteer hours, you know, it'd be kind of neat just to intermingle.
Well, what's good about it, it's funded by your, you know, local. So this year, they're gonna start the bus tours again, so they're gonna come to the district and they have a bus full of board members or community members. So then the folks from Backpack will go on the bus, present their program for like five or ten minutes. Get off and the bus takes off to the next place, so it's a good opportunity for the academy kids to get out there and get their story told, so it's really. I was happy they brought the bus tour back.
Well, thank you um to those donors this month, very much appreciated. Um, and then lastly here, uh minutes, so seven twelve was our regular board meeting, two is our special board meeting. Um, and then at this time, I'm gonna call for a motion to prove the consent agenda as presented. So moved first by Mark, second by Ann, those all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried, thank you everyone. Uh, lastly here, future dinner items, so the sixth of September will be our workshop at six. The thirteenth will be our regular board meeting at six thirty, going over OE three, OU nine. Um, then GP eight, and then just some other discussion, information-only topics you guys can read. Um, and then at this time.
Extra workshop in, yes, or not?
Really pretzel?
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's, it's definitely like.
It is a sense word to get. It is a sense word together with you to, in that for open notice. So we'll make a notice of that meeting, but. Right, that'll be on the eighth of the night.
Sure.
So just for, for the community, if they're curious what's being talked about, we have, as, this is a new board and I'm a very new superintendent. Uh, we're asking Dr. Lee Pritzel to be able to work with us to be able to help, you know, how do we work together? What are the basic policies? We need to do our homework just as much as anybody else and to just get the basics. And so he'll be working with us. He's worked with the board in the past. And he'll be working, but with the new board, new superintendent, just, I've got a lot of questions and I'm gonna get my money's worth, that's for sure. And talking with it. So we'll be meeting together on the eighth of the ninth to be able to help us learn to work as best we can.
Thank you. Um, at this time, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. So first by Dave. Second by Anne, those all favorite, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. None, motion carried. Thank you guys. Have a great night.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Good evening.
Enjoy the rest of your weekend.